So much.
Let me just double check here.
Welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission on Tuesday, October 10, 2023. This meeting is called to order. Ally, would you please call the roll for commissioners who are present and not?
I sure will. Thank you. Commissioner Mercado, I know is absent. Commissioner Prebatali?
Here.
Commissioner Rodby?
Here.
Commissioner Sumutzi?
Here.
Vice Chair Haveman?
Here.
And Chair Saudi is absent.
Okay, now to the order of the agenda. First off, are there any commissioners that would like to request changes to the order of the agenda? Seeing none, next we'll move on to the meeting procedures. The City of San Rafael remains committed for all to participate in real time, whether that is from here in the chambers or from the comfort of their own home. I want to welcome all that are making the time this evening to participate. Each member of the public will receive, provide, will provide three minutes for comment. This will ensure we have the opportunity to hear from everyone. Ally, would you please tell us how public comment will work this evening?
I sure will. So thank you Chair, Vice Chair Haveman. So this meeting is recorded and streamed live to YouTube and through Zoom. And viewers can provide comments by telephone by calling 669-444-9171. The meeting ID is 81500281975 pound. Or comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. If you, if you wish to speak during a public comment period and are participating virtually, use the, raise the hand icon at the bottom of the screen or press pound, sorry, star nine if you're phoning in. Folks attending in person will speak first, followed by those participating remotely. Displayed on the podium and on the projector is a timer to help you stay within the allotted timeframe. You are invited through not, you are invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of the San Rafael you reside in, or if from outside of San Rafael. We are offering closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom. Select the live transcript button on the Zoom to enable this feature. And as mentioned, we are providing Spanish, oh, we're not providing Spanish interpretation, period. That's it.
Thank you, Ally. The following is a refresher on our meeting procedures. We'll begin with a staff report. Commissioners will have the opportunity to ask questions of staff and the, and, well, there's no applicant. I ask the commissioners to make an effort to ask the entirety of their questions during this time prior to the close of public hearing. Members of the public will then be invited to speak. You'll have three minutes for public comment. We'll start with those present in the chamber, then those that are attending virtually. After the public comment, I will close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the commission for any discussion prior to requesting a motion and vote. Next on the agenda is urgent communication. This is the time for anyone with an urgent communication on a topic not on the agenda to address the commission. Are there any, any members of the public that have urgent communication tonight?
Please come to, please come to the podium or to comment on Zoom. Please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have three minutes to provide public comment and then will be muted once time has elapsed. Please speak slowly to allow the captions to capture your words. At this time, I see no raised hands on the conference call.
Okay, thank you, Monica. We'll now move on to the consent calendar, which has one item, and that is the approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes of July 11, 2023. Are there any comments from the public on the consent calendar? Okay. Are there comments or edits from the commission? Okay, then I request a motion on this item. Please announce your name prior to the motion or second.
This is John Prebatali. I make a motion to accept that consent calendar.
Thank you, Commissioner Prebatali. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Sumutzi, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sumutzi. Would any of the commissioners like to discuss the motion? Okay, moved and seconded. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Prebatali?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodby? Comis-, oh, you do that again with me?
Yes.
Commissioner Sumutzi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Haveman?
Yes.
And just to note again, Chair Saudi and Commissioner Mercado are absent.
Okay, and we have one action item. Public hearing on a resolution related to commercial linkage fees and amendments to the San Rafael Municipal Code making changes to the methodology for calculating commercial linkage fees. And we have the staff report, please.
Hi, good evening. Alexis Kaptanian, Housing Analyst with the City of San Rafael. And tonight I am presenting a recent study on commercial linkage fees in Marin County and proposed changes to the city's existing policy based on those study findings. So give me just a moment to share my screen. Okay. So we'll start with a little bit of background. A commercial linkage fee is an impact fee that charges new development, new commercial development for its role in creating new demand for affordable housing. So when there's new commercial space built and there are new workers needed to work in that new commercial space, and that generates a need for affordable workforce housing. And the wages of a portion of those workers are often not sufficient to afford market rate housing in Marin. And so that's the basis for the commercial linkage fee. San Rafael has had a commercial linkage fee in effect since 2005. The current study is based, or the current fee is based on a study from 2003, so 20 years ago. And it defines the linkage fee as a percentage of the inclusionary in lieu fee. So this table shows the number of units per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area required for each development type. So for example, the fee applied for office, research and development projects is three hundredths of a unit per 1,000 feet, square feet. A practical example would be that for a development project that's proposing 20,000 square feet of new office space, the fee would be calculated as follows. So you'd take the 20,000 square feet of office and you divide that by 1,000 to get 20. Then you multiply 20 by that point zero three from the prior table to get point six units. And then you would multiply the point six units by the city's affordable housing in lieu fee. And that would give you the amount that the developer would be required to pay, in this case about 206,000 in commercial linkage fees, or they could provide one unit of affordable housing. Since 2012, there have been five projects that paid more than $100,000 in commercial linkage fees. They're listed here in the table. The total revenue since the fee was instated in 2005 is estimated a little over two and a half million, and that's about $144,000 per year on average. So linkage fees from commercial developments are placed in the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund along with in lieu fees from residential projects. Tonight, we are discussing the fees for commercial projects only. There are separate affordable housing requirements for market rate residential projects. And then what do we do with the funds? So the trust fund is used to increase and expand the supply of housing affordable to very low, low and moderate income households. And recently, we've supported 100% affordable housing projects through the trust fund, including permanent supportive housing at 3301 Kerner and 190 Mill Street or Jonathan's Place, affordable housing for older adults at the Vivalon Healthy Aging Campus, 125 units preserved at Terre Lina Manor, and renovation of longtime affordable family housing at the Marin Villa Estates. And city contributions such as these are critical because affordable housing developers are also able, able to leverage these local dollars to compete more effectively for other funding sources. So with that background, we'll now turn to the study. Over the last several years, the City of San Rafael has collaborated with the County of Marin and five other jurisdictions on a regional analysis of commercial linkage fees. So jurisdictions that participated either did not have a commercial linkage fee in place. There were four jurisdictions that didn't have a commercial linkage fee in place, or they're like San Rafael, three of us adopted a fee in the early 2000s and were in need of an update. So the county hired consultants to conduct a commercial linkage fee nexus study. And the nexus study determines the justifiable fee that could be charged on commercial development based on the need for and the cost of affordable housing that new development projects create. So to establish that nexus, the consultant team modeled the employment and corresponding wage levels that would be generated by various types of commercial development. And the study analyzed the three most common commercial uses in Marin County. So that's office, research and development, retail, restaurant and services, and hotel motel. The study calculated a maximum fee that represents the, the revenue that would be required to completely close the gap between what it costs to build housing and what employees can afford. So the maximum fee shown in the last column here, they're not the recommended fees for adoption. They're preliminary justified fees that represent the maximum that a jurisdiction could charge to mitigate affordable housing demand related to commercial development. So as you can see, these are really high numbers per square foot. And so what the consultants did then is they, they took those maximums and they factored in financial feasibility, market patterns in Marin County. They looked at what are the existing fees in other jurisdictions in Sonoma, Napa, San Mateo, San Francisco. And they also collected some stakeholder feedback. So they met with Marin developers and got their input on the study and the fee structures. So after factoring in market considerations and comparing the fees to other jurisdictions, the consultants developed a recommended fee range for each, each development type. So the last column here is that consultant recommendation. And they recommended uniformly for all the jurisdictions participating, five to $10 a square foot for retail and three to $5 for hotel and motel. In the case of market, I mean, excuse me, in the case of office and R and D, San Rafael's market, they felt could support a higher fee at $10 to $15 compared to $5 to $10 a square foot in the other jurisdictions. And so next, and bear with me, I know this is a little bit of a process, but next, the participating jurisdictions took a look at the consultant recommendations and they developed a unified fee proposal, which is shown in the last column of this table. So $10 for office, $5 for hotel and motel. And then for retail, one of the consultant's recommendations was to consider giving a break for smaller business, retail, restaurant services. And so the collaborative came up with $10 if it's greater than 2,500 square feet, but $8 if it's under 2,500 square feet, if the, if the project is under 2,500 square feet. So one thing that is important to know here is there is not an exemption for any of the projects. And that's something that exists in our current policy and something that we'll spend a little bit of time talking about in a moment. And just to go back for a moment, I think one of the things that help, is helpful is to say, okay, well, what is our current fee? And how does that compare to what the unified fee proposal looks like? So one of the things that the consultant did was they took our existing fees that we showed you earlier and they converted them to an equivalent per square foot. So here's those, $10.32 for office, $7.74 for retail, and then $2.58 for hotel or motel. So what that gives us when we take a look at our current fee compared to the unified fee proposal is that the unified fee proposal would slightly reduce our office fee. It would increase our hotel motel fee pretty substantially. And that's in line with the consultant's findings that we were, actually, all of the jurisdictions were pretty behind on the hotel motel fee level. And then for retail, restaurant, there would be a very minor increase for projects above 5,000 square feet, because that is when our exemption ends, going up to $10. And but there would be a big jump for retail and for all of the projects that are under 5,000 square feet in any of these categories, because they would no longer have an exemption. So what we did was we then brought an informational report to the city council in June to get their preliminary feedback before we brought forward a recommendation. And one of the things that we heard from the city council is that San Rafael is pretty different from adjacent jurisdictions and that while the unified fee proposal might be a helpful guideline, that they also wanted to make sure that we were really balancing, supporting small businesses and also revenue in the trust fund. And so based on that, we've developed a set of recommendations for San Rafael that I'll go through now. So the first is simply to adopt a new methodology that was put forward in this study, and it expresses fees on a dollar per square foot basis. This is more standard and more common to have it, the fee expressed this way. And the, when we met with the Chamber of Commerce in mid-August, we met with the Governmental Affairs Committee, they were in support of this more clear and more straightforward way of expressing the fees. The second recommendation is that we maintain an exemption across all development types, but that we modify the square footage covered by the exemption from 5,000 to 2,500 square feet. And that's based on a staff analysis of the projects in recent years that have received an exemption. And you know, what, how, if they had had a fee, what that would have, how that would have contributed to their total fee load? And then also the lost dollars to the Affordable Trust Fund. So there were two projects that paid commercial linkage fees since January 2021. A five-story hotel and a hundred, over 100 units of assisted living. They paid a combined 876,000 in commercial linkage fees. And both of them actually still, the commercial linkage fee was a pretty significant portion of their fee load. In comparison, when we looked through projects that did not pay a commercial linkage fee, we identified 11 projects that were under 5,000 square feet. Some of the examples of what we saw were small, modest office expansions, a new grocery market. 10 of those 11 projects were under 2,500 square feet. And the 11th project was the gas station at a convenience store at a Chevron, which we felt perhaps could have stood to pay the fee. And looking at sort of the trust fund impacts, the hypothetical value of all those exemptions combined would be about 130,000, so pretty modest, about 12,000 a project or under 50,000 a year. Our third recommendation is to stick with the unified fee proposal for retail, restaurant services and hotel motel development types. So I'll show those again in a minute. But to adopt a higher fee for office R and D, which is in line with the consultant recommendations for San Rafael. So here's the table that kind of brings it all together, showing San Rafael's current fee for each type, what the consultant recommended, what the unified fee proposal was that was developed by a group of jurisdictions, and then staff's recommendation. And so staff's recommendation is to stick with that $5 per square foot for hotel motel, stick with $10 per square foot for retail, and then use the same percentage increase for office as for retail, restaurant. The consultants felt we could go as high as $15 a square foot, but I think we're, you know, also mindful of A, wanting to sort of stay competitive compared to adjacent jurisdictions. And the hotel motel has a little bit of a higher percentage of an increase, but again, that's because we were behind on that fee. Also note that this includes the 2,500 square foot exemption for all development types. And then finally, recommendation four is to allow the community development director to approve alternative timing for the developer payment. So typically, the payment will be paid at the issuance or before the issuance of a building permit. In a few, in some cases, a developer will approach and say, you know, because of cash flow, is it possible to defer that and pay before the certificate of occupancy? And so that's something that is in the code as something that could go to the city council. We're looking for the discretion to be able to, to do that at the director level. Okay, so with that, our recommended action would be to adopt a resolution recommending that city council adopt that commercial linkage fee study and then approve amendments to the code and adopt a resolution that establishes methodology for applying the commercial linkage fees with all of the recommendations that we just went over. So with that, that concludes the presentation and we're available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Alexis. Are there any questions from the commissioners? And I ask that the commissioners make an effort to ask the entirety of their questions at this time prior to the close of the public hearing.
Yeah, one quick question. Have you guys done any, could be even napkin math around the impact on like a sample project? Because I, I saw one of the examples of the total fees that were paid. You know, the numbers there seemed rather high. So I'm just curious as to the impact that, you know, makes the economics look like on a, on a proposed project.
So are you looking at like the 10, 11 projects that received exemptions or the actual projects that are paying the fees?
The two, I think there are two projects that are paying the fees, like the Aegis Building and I can't remember the other one.
The AC Marriott.
The AC Marriott, yeah.
And are you thinking about like, you know, would they have maybe built more units? Or is that kind of what you're thinking of?
So I think, I think it could be that. The other possibility is just what, what impact does it necessarily have on the market in general? To certain kind of fees? And I mean, I'm not, I'm not coming at it from a standpoint of like having an opinion about it. I'm just curious as to like, have we just done the math to see like what, what impact that might have?
So certainly, the, the study that was done by the consultants was looking at, you know, what level of fees could the market in San Rafael support? But it did not include like a project level analysis. And then staff focused on analysis of projects that would or would not receive an exemption.
Yep.
So can I add to that? The total fee amount, for example, for the hotel projects would be twice as much as what we have, what we saw them pay. So previously, 250 or $2 a square foot to going up to $5 a square foot, so it would be double. So in this case, I think it was 260 something. So additional fees would be what they would, they would be, if they were to come in today, the total amount would be in the $500,000 range. Five to 600,000.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, so again, no idea, but just kind of curious as to what impact fees have, especially in this current environment, on what demand might look like.
Yeah, a curiosity, I noticed that warehousing and light industrial were not included in the report. So where are they then in this fee schedule?
Thanks for the question. So that's correct. The, the consultants focused on the three most common types of commercial development. However, there is a section in the code that would remain that allows the community development director to apply a fee based on available data for development types that are not covered in those three types. The consultants also provided us with a calculator to assist with that. And so what staff would do would be to ask the developer for a range of positions that would be filled within that use type and then would pull from available databases to develop and sort of plug into the calculator to determine the justifiable fees.
Okay, so they would not be included in the higher research and development in office. So that's interesting. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rodby. Commissioner Prebatali? Thank you Commissioner Robbie, Commissioner Privatelli.
Thank you, I had a couple of questions that were actually follow-ups to my other commissioners' questions. One was. About the the way that office and R and D space. Fees were calculated with regard to. The cost of rentals. Is it, is it correct to assume that because? San Rafael can demand a higher cost of rental that the fees are thus higher? Compared to other communities?
Do you mean that the developer won't charge higher rates in San Rafael compared to an adjacent jurisdiction? With a lower commercial linkage fee?
Not exactly, I mean, what I meant was, did the, did the consultant or? Can we get away with a higher linkage fee in San Rafael compared to other cities? Is the rationale that we can do that because the developer can charge, you know, a higher. Square foot rate for to sell the units or or rent the units? Is that sort of the way the the calculation works? What what's, what's the motivation between, behind a higher? Linkage fee for R and D and office compared to other communities, is another way to phrase it?
Sure, so so San Rafael has the strongest office market and I think is the most desirable locale, so yes.
So it is, it's based on basically like the the cost of rent, renting a unit here compared to other communities?
Yes, I think it's it's based on. I think it's based on the desirability of San Rafael for multiple things that make it. More desirable to be located in and sort of cluster with commercial and office in San Rafael.
Okay, yeah, and and just a follow-up. Is that true that, actually, I don't, I don't know what the rental rates are. For R and D and office space in San Rafael compared to other communities, but is it, is it true that? You guys happen to know if.
So I.
Building owners here?
I know, I have Mica Hinkle, Economic Development Director on the phone and I would love to see if Mica, if you have anything you want to add on this particular question.
Hi, good evening, Planning Commissioners, Mica Hinkle, City of San Rafael Economic Development Director. You're asking some really good questions, but I wanted to try to address a couple of those. The first one is about the total fee calculation. You know, the, but the total impact of costs associated with the developer. And and every time, every city has a little different fee structure and there's only certain amount of. Competitiveness that cities can really charge or push on fees. In essence, from a developer, when they look at fees, they they just look at the total cost for development versus where the dollars go to. And that's something I think we analyzed and I know staff, when we, when we looked at this linkage fee. We were cognizant of all the fees that are charged, the same thing goes for the countywide study. What's key is this fee applies countywide. So in terms of a competitive advantage or disadvantage, there really isn't one because the entire county is looking at that. When developers look at kind of placing their investment in communities. They look at multiple communities and locations, in this case Marin is its own submarket. So when they place their dollars, they. They do look at fees, but they're not, that's a factor, but not the total factors, they look at total costs. So desirability of location. Where else they can actually get approval and build their product? And basically marketability. So hopefully that kind of talks a little about the fee calculation standpoint about. Like is, are we charging too much, right, or can we charge a lot more? There's a second question that was asked by, this was just recently asked about our market rents. In essence, we really haven't built a lot of industrial development in San Rafael. So we actually have a different class of product. So our our market rents are actually probably mid to low comparison of the industrial market throughout the Bay Area and North Bay. So I think there's an opportunity. You know, to evaluate these things, for different product types, if different product types that come on board, like there's a question asked about R and D or heavy office users. I do think the flexibility that the Community Development Director has to apply office rates to that would be applicable. Versus some of the things we've seen is like distribution warehouse or last mile delivery. Well, there really isn't a high employment count, but a large square footage. So I think maintaining that balance with the Community Development Director and those fee calculators, I think is really a good balance at this time. I do think industrial will be a player for us over time. Currently, our market's actually probably at its lowest mark just because we really haven't built a lot of product in in that's been in that market typology, so.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just gonna assume that if you look at a project's pro forma. You know, when you, if you balance the capital cost of building the project with the income over time. That that's what the consultants did to justify. And maybe the city as well to justify a higher linkage fee. Because overall, the projects have their, they're richer in in San Rafael. And that would be consistent, Alexis, with what you were saying, that there's more demand here. So I'm thinking that that's, is that a correct way to think about it?
Yes, just based on what Alexis is saying and what I'm hearing from Mica as well, that's, that seems to align with what your, your question is.
Okay, good.
The conclusions that you're coming to.
Okay, yeah, sorry, I'm trying to get, just trying to understand it. And then, yeah, and thank you, Mica, I really appreciate your insights on that as well. And then the other question I had was. About. Basically, the process of. Of applying linkage fees to industrial warehouse spaces, I know we discussed that just now and it would be, is it correct to assume it would be up to your discretion? As Community Development Director?
Yeah, so the, the way the ordinance, the recommended ordinance would read is it would allow the Community Development Director to make that determination in terms of a. You know, kind of finding that that right number, but it wouldn't be solely me, it would be that, you know, the director would be working with the Economic Development Director and the Housing. Manager to come up with what that number might be in consultation with our. Calculator that was provided by the, by the consultant and and yeah, that's, it would be kind of a combination of. A team, it's a team effort.
Okay, yeah, the reason I'm. A little bit concerned about that is because it does sound like it's a, it's complex. And I know that we're trying to streamline processes for permitting and development here. I mean, do you think, just, do you think that it would? Be beneficial to eventually sort of like standardize that process and?
Yes, absolutely, I think one of the first steps is to kind of gauge what, you know, as projects come in, we don't have a lot to. To use to be able to kind of demonstrate what that might look like, but I think with this. This process, it would allow us some, some data that we could use to kind of figure out what that number might be in the future. So one of the things that Alexis was saying was the last time we reviewed our master fees, our, our commercial linkage fee was. In early two thousand, best practices, five to eight years, in fact, the state requires more. You know, consistent review of our, our fees, so. I anticipate that in the next five or so years, we'll probably open it up again and just to make sure that we will, we are kind of consistent with. That we're, you know, that we have justification for what we have, what we're charging, so. In that iteration, we may have more data to use for the industrial. Sorry, yeah, the industrial and warehouse spaces as well.
Okay, so five to eight years, you said, okay. Yeah, I mean, that does seem kind of like a long timeframe, but. Do you, it sounds like we're not expecting a lot of light industrial and warehouse development, is that a correct assumption?
You know, I was just gonna say, I mean, we would welcome it, absolutely, but I was just gonna say that in doing this analysis. I didn't come across a single light industrial manufacturing or warehouse project.
Okay.
That, that, you know, that paid the fee. The commercial linkage fees, so again, we'd welcome it, but it's, it's far less common than these three uses that are included here. I had one other thing, if I may, on your question, a couple of questions around having a slightly higher office fee compared to adjacent jurisdictions. And one thing that I just wanted to note is that since the early two thousands. Four of the adjacent jurisdictions didn't have any fee, right? So we were competing ten dollars thirty-two cents against zero, right? Corte Madera had four dollars seventy-nine cents for office, three dollars and twenty cents for R and D. And then unincorporated, unincorporated Marin County had seven dollars and nineteen cents. And we were at ten dollars and thirty-two cents and still, still competing in that market, so just to. Kind of. Say that we have been, had a higher fee for that particular usage for a while.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Privatelli, I I do have a couple of questions, I think, sort of. Asking a similar question to a couple of the others, there was no sort of elasticity analysis. Of these, these numbers done, correct? It's, my, my understanding of how they were arrived at was basically looking at surrounding jurisdictions and. Guessing how much more we could charge than than other cities. Is that more or less correct?
I think that's correct and I think that, I think that's part of why the consultants gave a fee range, right? And was to look at and say, I mean, and when they looked at, for instance, San Francisco, they've got fees up to sixty-five dollars a square foot. Sonoma's got a little bit lower fees, right? And so I think that they were trying to locate, you know, in between, so yes, I think that's correct.
But we, we don't really know how big a fee the city, the city and demand in the city could support.
I think that's correct, I think that sort of legally by state law, there has to be that nexus study that establishes that.
Maximum.
The maximum at three hundred and thirty dollars, right? And then, and then there's some. Discretion after that.
Yeah, as I, I won't quibble with the notion that the maximums are untenable. But, but at the same time, they're, they're interesting because they provide an estimate of the gap. Right, I mean, it's, it's estimated that at the, the, the fee levels that the consultant suggests to bring in about five hundred thousand dollars a year. And I wonder how much it would bring in if we had the maximum fees. Applied, probably zero because we did no development, but, but, but do we have a sense for how big the gap is? Overall, and it's not five hundred thousand dollars a year. That's a substantially larger number.
So you're not asking about, so there's the affordability gap that they've identified in the study, but you're saying the gap between. What we, what it could support and what we're.
No, no, I, I am asking about the affordable affordability gap. Right, because the, the, the maximums are based on the affordability, the actual affordability gap, right?
So I didn't go over it, maybe I can just share screen real quick because I kind of breezed over this in the presentation, but it is here.
Okay, oh, it's, it's in fact sitting right in front of me, I missed it in the table.
Oh, what did I do here, okay.
Figure sixteen.
Figure sixteen, yeah.
Yes, so, so there's our, this is the affordability gap for each use type. Looking at a hundred thousand square foot, assuming a hundred thousand square foot project.
Right. Okay, so we don't, we don't have an estimate of, given what projects might be coming in the pipeline, we don't have an estimate of the affordability, affordability gap. Is that correct?
We, we don't have an analysis of like, we're expecting this project to, this, you know. Five-story hotel to come through and here's the gap that that will create. Although I think this study is helpful in giving us a sense of the, like you said, that there's a substantial gap.
Yeah, okay, and and I was also gonna ask about the facility for increasing it, but it sounds like that happens every five to eight years.
Yeah, so the best practices, you know, Alexis was saying the last time we had an update was in early two thousand, probably over twenty years ago. Best practices, five to eight years, and the state is asking us to, you know, make sure that we're updating and reviewing more regularly. So that we're staying on top of what the markets are looking like.
Thank you, Ellie, are there any, any remaining questions?
I do have one, just for a question.
I noticed that was Corte Madera and Sausalito have not moved forward even, what, do you know what their status is?
Yes, and I, I do, so I believe that in both of those cases. The staff are having to prioritize projects and so I, I believe. I particularly talked to Corte Madera recently and I believe there's an intention, it's a matter of, they felt since they have a fee in place that. They could. Prioritize some other things and then get to it. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions from the commissioners, Monica, please open the public hearing.
For those wishing to speak on the item, please come up to the podium or to comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine, which you hear, when, once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak. Please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker will have three minutes to provide public comment and then will be muted once time has elapsed. At this time, I see no raised hands on the conference call.
Looks like we have no commenters.
Okay, if we have no commenters, then the public hearing is now closed. Before we vote on the report, the commissioners have the opportunity to provide any comments and engage in discussion. We'll go down the line in the order that we're seated tonight. Commissioner Samuti, do you have any comments on the report?
No, I think that, I think the focus of the report is. More emphasizing the standardization of the fees, which I think I agree with, I think there's probably a broader conversation about. The actual fees themselves and sort of the economic impact of of said fees. I'm, I understand where this is coming from. I'm curious though, because I don't think that we've tested the, like, the actual market impact on, in terms of like. I guess opportunity cost of, you know, another developer actually providing those same housing units. So I think that would be the only comment is if maybe adding a recommendation to perform some sort of study in that, in that regard.
Commissioner Robbie?
Yeah, overall, I agree with Fisher. Did have a question, when you're looking at the warehousing and industrial, wondering if it would make sense to broaden that in looking at the East Bay. Especially Richmond and that area because there is a lot of new warehousing going up in Great Richmond right now. Just a thought, and I do like the idea of giving you the authority to work with the developers in terms of when those payments are due. Developers. Thank you.
Commissioner Privatelli?
Yeah, I like the idea of doing a study maybe in, I don't know, a year and a half, two years? What do you think? Yeah, two years? Does that seem feasible or reasonable to?
To redo the Nexus study?
No, 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 just to, just for the city to look at. I mean, I don't want to create, you know, unneeded work for you, something that's like not achievable. Or it would be expensive or anything like that, but I mean, just to maybe do something similar to. Those tables that show how much. How many properties have paid? The linkage fees just over the course of the last two years. Something like that, something simple like that, something similar to what we have here in this report. Just to get a sense of how things are going.
Yeah, I think one way that we could do that could be when we do our annual progress report. That we are presenting to you, that we could provide that information on how much fees were collected for residential, for, for, you know, that would go into our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And that would, that seems like a pretty related topic so that we could do that. Kind of earlier part of next year.
Okay. Does that seem like a good approach to the other commissioners? Okay, great.
And then annually after that.
Yeah, and I guess maybe if we could fold in something, some way to tell if we would make. How things are going with the warehouse and industrial space, I guess maybe that could, that could be easily folded into that, right?
Yes, and that may be. You know, it may not be next year because we may not see anything, but yeah, we'd be happy to report out on what, what projects are coming forward.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Privatelli. I do have a couple of comments and one is that the fee seems relatively small relative to, relative that is to the need that's created by the new developments should they occur. And that concerns me just a little bit. I mean, as an economist, I sort of wonder about is that then, you know, if we are really only trying to raise $500,000 a year, is that really then the best way to go about doing it? I think it would be interesting to have a conversation about whether or not this is the best way to go about doing it. I think that this is the direction that we're headed and I think the report makes sense. I'm a little concerned about the comparable jurisdictions because comparable jurisdictions are in Marin, San Francisco, which is not a comparable jurisdiction, South San Francisco, I'd also argue is not that comparable. But maybe, you know, a more, another study would go a little bit further afield to looking at, I mean, San Rafael is, when it comes to office medical and R and D, I mean, San Rafael is kind of it for Marin. So comparing what we do with other parts of Marin doesn't make very much sense. There might be other cities. I don't know. I don't know which cities they would be. But I would look a little bit further and harder. Other than that, yeah, I think this is moving in the right direction. I like the clarity that the fees bring. And I think that's all that I have. Anybody else have anything else? Okay, then would anybody like to entertain a motion to accept the report and present to council?
Commissioner, Chair? Yeah, so the recommendation is to adopt a resolution accepting, adopting the report and recommending amendments to the municipal code and recommending adoption of a resolution that would amend the, provide the methodology, establishing a new, a new methodology for the fee schedule. Did I say that right?
So is it written in the script?
I'd be happy to just say that's what I just said as the motion, whoever wants.
Okay, so I was going to say, would anybody like to offer a motion that endorses what Ellie just said?
Yeah, I'll say motion so moved.
Can we have a second?
Commissioner Roddy, I second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Roddy. Can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Pravatalli?
Yes.
Commissioner Roddy?
Yes.
Commissioner Samutti?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Haveman?
Yes.
And we have Commissioner Mercado and Chair Saudi absent.
Okay, next we'll move on to the director's report.
Thank you for bearing with me. Yes, I do have some updates. Wanted to start with the question that came up earlier today and that is the boards and commissions interviews were held October, well, the city council is doing a series of boards and commission interviews on October 2nd. They did interviews for the planning commission, appointments with Kelly Shock leaving. It opened up an opportunity for district appointments. And so the two appointments that were made included for District Two Chair Saudi and reappointment of Commissioner Samutti for District Three. So we're really happy to have those two reappointments to the planning commission. We also saw a reappointment of board member Summers for the design review board. I'm excited to have that for continuity and provides a great, great fill for that position. On September 18th, we, the city council received a report on a permit improvement program and customer satisfaction survey that was prepared by the Marin Builders Association. We were really excited to have that presented. Our community development team often is receiving negative feedback and it was really nice to have them receive the positive feedback that they did. It was very well deserved. They've been working really hard, you know, continuing to operate and just merging their talents and being able to provide customer service to planning and building customers. So that was really great to be able to share that with them. We'll continue to work with the Marin Builders Association in the future to continue to, you know, improve the way we operate and the customer service that we provide. So something else that came up on that meeting date was the city council authorized the expenditure of $1.45 million for affordable housing from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And Alexis was just mentioning that we, this is kind of how this money is used. We release a notice of funding availability and we're able to fund projects through, you know, accepting in-lu fee payments. This money went to rehab projects in the canal. Rehab a project in Terellinda and allowed for adaptive reuse of one of the projects that we had previously funded, I'm at 3301 Carner Boulevard. On August 21st, we also provided a presentation to the city council on a response to a grand jury report regarding how to build more ADUs within the city, Marin County as a whole, but the city of San Rafael. So we presented that to the city council, a response to that in the city council. And then wanted to mention something that I'm really excited to see. We received an application for building permits for 350 Marydale. This is a 45-unit condominium project that went through the process a couple of years ago and we just hadn't seen much movement. So was really excited to see that finally come through. And Monica, can you remind me number of units and affordable units on that?
Two low-income units.
And a total of four, total of 45 units, but two low-income units. And then they requested a fee out last year when the city council adopted the changes to the in-lu fee, which allowed for payment of portions of their, of the requirements as in-lu fee payment. So super excited to see that and can't wait to have some building on that location. So that's it.
Ellie, do you have a sense of our meetings coming up?
I do not. I will reach out. I actually was trying to find our list of who else is, like what the design review board meetings are and who's assigned to those as well. And I was not able to locate those, but I'll find those and send them via email to all of you.
Great. Thanks very much, Ellie. Okay, do any planning commission members have any communication? Okay, then if there are no communications, I think that we're ready to adjourn at 7:59 tonight. Meeting is adjourned.